I should have organized as a city council. I'd like to call the order to Schenectady City Council Committee meeting for Monday, December 16, 2024, and we'll start with a presentation by Mr. Wall.
Thank you.
Good evening. So, we are here today to discuss the Schenectady area-wide speed limit study. It is a study that we've been talking about for quite some time at the request of the council to lower the speed limit in the city to 25 miles an hour, working cooperation, as we talked about, with the Capital Region Transportation Council under the Safe Streets for All grant. They secured a consultant. Representative of the consultant is here, Matthew Rowe with Stan Tech Engineers. He's going to run through the presentation tonight, which mimics the draft presentation that we have, and then we can provide you with just an overall synopsis of where we are and what we're looking forward to going forward. So, I'll move it to Matthew.
Thanks, Chris. Hi, everyone again. I'm Matthew Rowe at Stan Tech, and it's great to be here today. It's my first time working at Schenectady City Council or its committees. So, I am going to talk just a little bit about speed limits in general. I'm going to talk about some of the changes that have happened in the way that speed limits were set in the United States and some of the options that we have and why that matters for Schenectady. First, I'm going to just show what I think is the most important item here, which is the summary of our actual recommendations. So, we did a study of Schenectady streets focusing on three categories of streets: streets that are primarily local, streets that are in a kind of a mid-level category, and streets that primarily have a through function, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But, the very short version is that we're recommending a 25 mile per hour citywide speed limit that'll affect all cities, all city-maintained streets, won't affect any state-maintained streets, so that includes things like the Crosstown Connector, New York 7 won't be affected. And, we're also recommending just a few specific exceptions that'll either make the speed limit more coherent on a particular corridor or is just more appropriate for that particular street. So, Maxon Road Extension would remain 30 miles per hour. Erie Boulevard south of State Street would remain 30 miles per hour. State Street east of Fair Avenue, from Fair Avenue to the city line is currently 35 miles per hour, signed for 35 miles per hour, and that would be changed to 30 rather than to 25, but the rest of State Street would be changed to 25 miles per hour. And Millard Street, which is just a few blocks long and connects Broadway to Viter, Viter is this exception because it's state-owned, so Millard Street would remain 30 for consistency and coherence. One of the exciting things is that Schenectady would be only the second city in the region to adopt a 25 mile per hour limit. Albany has been in the process of doing so. Kingston recently adopted its 25 mile per hour limit, and Town of Brighton near Rochester, Tarrytown, and Rochelle villages in downstate adopted 25 mile per hour speed limits. Cities in New York State are allowed to do this, and villages in New York State are allowed to do this after a study. We all know that speed kills, but I want to note that there's an exponential increase because what we talk about when we're talking about speed is force quadrupling when speed doubles. So, when hit at 23 mile per hour, 90% of people survive. Hit at 32 miles per hour, only 75% of people survive. We want to increase our odds. Our goal is zero fatalities or serious injuries on our streets, and if we're going to do that, we need to get serious about speed. Stopping distance also increases exponentially, and what I don't have is a diagram of driver's cone vision, but the driver's cone vision narrows as speed increases. It's just a natural thing. When we're driving faster, we can't see to the sides as easily, we can't as easily detect people walking, people biking, other cars. So, lowering speed on a city street makes a ton of sense from an engineering perspective, and that's the bottom line. Speed limit studies have changed over time. In the past, there was federal guidance and even a federal standard that said you have to study the free-flow speed of traffic, and you have to base your, you should base your decisions on it. So, there's guidance that you should base your decisions on a standard that you had to study the free-flow speed of traffic, and the guidance was, well, the third fastest car out of 20, the 85th percentile speed, which you may have heard about 85th percentile speed before. So, that is one of the reasons that speed limits sometimes have ratcheted up over time, and that leaves us in a situation where it's only the speeders who are determining the speed limit. We don't want that to be our situation. The new federal manual, it's called Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, the METCD, the new federal manual says you have to study the context of the street. So, in this case, an urban context. Our study areas span from what would be what's nationally considered urban core all the way to what's nationally considered suburban, but there's very little, that's mostly urban core and urban. We based the approach to this study on the NACTO City Limits Guide, which I was actually a co-author of, and the fundamental concept is that you've got a default speed limit. That helps drivers because it's consistent, it's something that they can expect, and then you have specific corridors, speed limits, and you might even have some slow zones. Now, we don't have the ability to set larger zones below 25 miles per hour except at schools, and so that's where the slow zones are. The idea is, the more conflicts there are and the more activity there is, the lower you're going to want the speed limits to be. On most streets in Schenectady, there's a fairly high conflict density, and that's everything from driveways to people crossing the street to drivers pulling in and out of parking spaces, and there are varying activity levels. So, you end up with a matrix. I think the most important thing to take away from this is that the national guidance is now actually going further than we can go tonight, right? We can't set a 20 mile per hour speed limit under state law, but national guidance is now saying, actually, a lot of Schenectady streets, the local streets, would be appropriate for 20 mile per hour speed limits based on their level of conflict and activity. So, we did the study based on something called functional class, or starting on it. Context is the main thing, but we did analyze streets based on essentially their role in the transportation network. But, functional class does not tell you anything about context, so we looked at them. So, Wyoming Avenue is an example of what we're calling a group-one street, a local street, recommendation 25 mile per hour speed limit. Hullett Street is another good example. So, different contexts, but similarly low-volume, low-existing-speed streets. Group-two is where it gets a little more interesting. We have streets like Knott Street or Altamont Avenue where they might be one lane each way, they might have more like 6,000 or 10,000 cars per day, but their existing speeds are, in the case of Knott Street, the existing speeds were, the median speeds were 29 miles per hour, and while they might be higher on Altamont Avenue, they may be, it might not be appropriate to have a higher speed limit in part because there are blocks like the ones that you see here where there isn't sufficient room even for designated lanes in each direction. There's one exception in this group, which is Maxon Road Extension, because it's, as I mentioned before, because it's the continuation of Erie Boulevard, a state-owned portion of Erie Boulevard that has a 40 mile per hour speed limit, and because of its context, and because it actually has a great deal of separation of modes. Bikes and pedestrians have the option of being on the shared use path, Maxon Road Extension, for most of its extent. So, that was one reason we were comfortable retaining a 30 mile per hour speed limit there. Another street in the next category, State Street is officially classified as an arterial street, but we're still recommending a 25 mile per hour speed limit on most of it based on its context. We all know State Street, we all know what it's like, we all know that it's one of the busiest places in the city, and that includes the section from Knott Terrace to Fair Avenue where we have our busiest bus route, and we have controlled and uncontrolled crossings, places where you're allowed to cross the street without a signal. So, these are places where we want to really protect people, and we want to have that 25 mile per hour speed limit. Further east, there are fewer crossings like that, there are fewer crossing points like that. The crossings do happen, but we want to reduce the speed limit to protect people who are walking, biking, taking the bus, driving, turning left off of State Street, or onto it. And, for that reason, we're recommending a 5 mile per hour reduction in the speed limit. But, it is part of what's considered a long haul for CDTA, and there's value in retaining 30 mile per hour speed limit there. For Erie Boulevard, the recommendation was to keep it 30 miles per hour on the median-divided portion of Erie Boulevard, which is south of State Street, but to lower it to 25 miles per hour between State Street and Knott Street, between State Street and the roundabout. And, this may start just before State Street, it could start at State Street or just after State Street, but the roundabout provides a good transition from the 40 mile per hour segment, state-owned segment, to the more, to the city-owned segment. So, thanks. And I'll go back to the map at the beginning.
Just to point out, that's what we were saying, the map was Millard Avenue between Viter and Broadway. Just today, Matthew and I were talking about this, that's why we revised it, is having this map on the screen is useful because what it shows is many people don't realize it, but Viter Avenue in front of the fire station, the county jail, and the county buildings that is state-controlled, so we do not have the authority to change that to 25. Similarly to Broadway, we do not have the authority to change Broadway between, where was it, Edison and Weaver, essentially. So, to leave Millard, the hill, at 25, I think that would create confusion for motorists, and it is, I know it is residential, but there's only residents on the one side, there is a sidewalk, so I think from an enforcement, from a signage perspective, to leave that particular corridor from Albany Street to 890 till when the state ends at 30. So, that was, we were able to get it updated on the presentation, but we weren't able to update it in your packet because we just talked about it today while we were getting ready for this meeting. And then the other spot that, you know, I'm really, really happy with Matthew when working with, Carrie is here from our Capital Region Transportation Council, she walked in, she's been a great partner in this. I think that the study and the recommendations are pretty straightforward and clear, and they line up with what I talked about earlier. The only area that I think there is a little nuance in discussing is Erie Boulevard from State Street to the roundabout because of what we have there, to what Matthew was talking about with Maxon Road. Maxon Road, similarly, to Erie is, you're coming into the city on Aqueduct Road in Niskuna, that's a 45 mile per hour road, and then you come into the city, and Maxon Road is a commercial corridor, it has essentially no residential on it, and the point you make about having separated bikehead infrastructure is good because I think that shows that there is the accommodations there. So, I think to bring that to 25 wasn't really necessary, and then when you hit Erie, you're at 40. So, you know, it's 30, I think we'd leave it, but that section of Erie Boulevard is the one that I think we've been seeing over the last five years, that section transform from commercial into residential. We've seen multiple apartment buildings, we have one being built now, and so I think that 25 is appropriate, but I could also be swayed that the use of that being 30 from 40 and being there, we do have lots of crossings and new signals, we just upgraded the signals, we're really trying to focus on pedestrian accommodations there. So, if there was one little bit of fat in the report to chew on, I would say that particular corridor would be it. So, other than that, that's the report, that are our recommendations. I believe this is a call for public hearing. We can make the revised report public, we can make the presentation which mimics it public for the information, and then the public hearing would be, Sean?
The 13th of January. Yes, and then I pass out a draft to the council members regarding the ordinance, and that would be, that could be part of the public hearing as well, so it'd be supporting materials plus the draft.
Okay, so my first question, you actually already addressed what was going to be available for the public hearing. The other one, you mentioned Altamont Avenue and the speed limit there to be lowered to 25. So, does Altamont, doesn't that cross into Rotterdam? And so, at what point does that become, and what is the speed limit in Rotterdam on that part?
It's 30 at the city line. And, I think it increases soon after that, but it would be, it would be 25 miles per hour up to the Schenectady city line, up to the Rotterdam line. We just don't have jurisdiction beyond that, actually.
So, that leads me to my other question regarding the signage, because now you're going from probably within a block, not even a block, you're going from 25 to 30, so and probably something maybe you'd still be working on, has the signage already been figured out so the people are aware that within this block, it goes from 25 to 30, and not even just here, but anywhere that's a 30 mile per hour?
Yeah, at the transitions, at the city line. There's a typical sign that's used, it's the city speed limit sign, so it would say 25 city speed limit. That's the same sign that Albany is using. And, there's other options, but that's the primary recommendation.
And why did you write it, Bobby, because I read the article regarding what people's reactions were towards that. Did you have anything to do with the Albany?
No, I didn't.
And I just need a little bit more clarity on the Erie Boulevard piece, about the Maxon Road Erie Boulevard. So, south of State Street, south of State going towards 890 would be 25?
30.
Would be 30.
So, right now, the only recommended area on Erie Boulevard to remain 30 is what we're calling the boulevarded section. State Street to 890 was essentially functions as the off-ramp and the entryway into the city. It's boulevarded, it is not the same character as the rest of the street, and then the recommendation is, given the changing character of the remaining portion of Erie with the residential and some of the, you know, comments that we've gotten from the stockade residents and walking, that even though that Erie Boulevard is essentially the most commercial corridor we have with the highest volumes, that that section be brought down to 25 miles per hour.
Thank you. Any bays have any questions?
In terms of the public information campaign, which, you know, you talked about in here, how much time do you think we need for something like that in terms of how long should we give it to be able to make sure that we're appropriately giving people enough time to understand what the changes are going to be?
Do you want for the public hearing or for the enforcement?
For the public information piece, like so PSA's, you know, anything that we're doing in that way. I do also want to know about enforcement in terms of whether we're going to be able to have appropriate enforcement once this goes into effect as well, would be another question that I have.
So, one recommendation, one recommendation would be to have the PSA's and other multimedia campaigns happen over a period of about six weeks, and that doesn't mean that the speed limit can't change in that time, right? So, if you, if, you know, you have the public hearing and you decide to forward and you've got the, you've got a date set, and Chris and his crews can do their work, which will take them some time, you know, at that point, that can be your speed limit start date, your PSA's can start while you're doing that, while the, while the speed limit signs are going up, then you can also start, you can start the full transition then, but the PSA's can continue. So, six weeks isn't like, it isn't like, oh, you have to wait that time before putting up the signs, it's not like that. I would wait before, I would have a warning period.
For enforcement?
That is something that's. And that could be that same six-week period where drivers are given warnings and set of citations, but that's just, that would be up to the boys in the car.
And I also, I think that we, it's not a lot of signage that has to get changed. I think that's important to point out because we had heard that concern, you know, we have to like, you know, spend a lot of money and change a lot of signs, but it's clear that it's not a lot of signage that has to get changed.
Correct. I mean, Brian's here, we've had these discussions. We think that this is a manageable task now that we've had our head around it. You know, Brian's prepared, he's already talked with his in-house crews about it and what the undertaking is, you know. Some of these areas, yes, the signage has to be brought up because you're going to have areas that weren't 30 to 25, there's going to be some transition areas, so those have to be thought out, but as you see, there's five transition areas, one to four transition areas, so it's not terrible. We have the 30 mile per hour signs up, so you can leave those and maybe move a couple. I can't speak for enforcement, we really haven't had a coordination meeting, I'm really focused on trying to get the report together and a lot of these things, so the details of the rollout, I don't have, but I wanted to make sure I got this report in front of you with the recommendations.
Any other questions?
When we're looking at a high-conflict density area street, what would, if anything, how would it impact changing the street from two-way to one-way? Would that impact it at all?
Sorry. When you're looking at a high-conflict. Yeah. So, one-ways are, one-way conversions are a, are, I'll answer this in the planner, the planner view, which is that there's pros and cons. The pro is that if you do a one-way conversion, you can sometimes create space for other uses, right? Because instead of having two-way, two-way vehicle traffic one in each direction, you could just have one lane, because that one lane does actually carry more than its half of the street used to carry, right? So, you've got the ability to sort of create space on your street by doing that. I think that that's, that would be a reason to do it. A reason not to is if the, if it's to, if you're converting a street from two-way to one-way, and what you end up with is two one-way lanes, two lanes in the same direction, that tends to increase speeds, and you can get, you can get some very high speed. In that case, you have a jockey for position and all of that, you get a multi-story street, so it's hard to. I have no questions.
Great question. The other side of that, Joe, is when you go to a one-way street, what do you do with the traffic you're burying off? I used to make sure you've got a place to adequately funnel it to not create a problem someplace else.
Any other?
I'll just say that, I mean, unless somebody has any questions. I mean, I appreciate the study being done, I think it's really great that we have this data now to kind of justify the change in the speed limit, I really appreciate that. I think obviously, you know, first and foremost is the safety of the pedestrians and the drivers, so, you know, I think that's a really strong reason to move forward with this. And I also just wanted to say that I have still continued the conversation with AAA, so there will be an announcement soon about, you know, having some sort of incentive for folks to take the defensive driving class in addition to the discount that people get once they take the defensive driving, and I hope to be able to talk about that at our next committee meeting in more specifics.
I don't want to put it in a, Adam or Randy have any comments, I know this would be anything that they should roll out this program.
As far as enforcement is concerned, if we enforce a 30, we can enforce a 25, right?
Easy.
So, yeah, well, thank you both again for the presentation and the update. I know it took a while to get us here, but we are here, so I want you to know that.
Yeah, I would think the next conversation where we get maybe a little bit more into details of rollout and some of those things are going to be the committee meeting after the public hearing, so that we're going to hear from the public. You know, I would like to leave this report in draft form, we're already, like I said, we just changed it today after we reviewed it, see what people's opinions are of the report, see what we're hearing from the community, and then we can discuss it at the next time, and at that point, you know, I'll work with Adam and maybe even Carrie and Matthew about what kind of rollouts are in the area. You know, I've worked on campaigns with the DMV and Department of Health and Places for statewide rollout campaigns to see what we want to do, because, I mean, at the end of the day, this isn't a, you know, this isn't about tax revenue and making tickets, this is about safety. So, we just want people to drive slow, that's what we're trying to do. So, I think that's, I think that's the next time that we want to talk about it.
Great, thank you so much. So, we will take up the vote in public safety. Okay, thanks a lot, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the Finance Committee.
Yes, I'd like to call Finance to order. We have six items on the agenda. The first item is, and this is in place of Chairperson Ruverin who couldn't be with us tonight, but the first item is an ARPA update, and so I'd like to ask Ms. Barbara to please come up for that.
Good evening. So, I have a high-level ARPA update for you since the last time we met, we have gone into contract with Dory Community Foundation, so I'm happy to report that all ARPA projects under development are, have fully executed contracts. We are working internally to narrow down some of the recommendations that I made to finance the city council on possible reallocation of ARPA funding. I hope to have a final list recommendation to provide to city council by the next meeting. We're meeting internally, so I'll have the final decision after that up. In consideration, one, I don't know, I just felt like I wanted to sing a song, I'm sorry, I'm just joking. One, the subrecipient, DC and I have stated that they are having some challenges with spending that money down, which they did report that at their, when they came into their presentation with city council, so that's going to leave roughly about $220,000 back from DC and I. The other one that is in discussion that we have not made a front of. The other one that is in discussion that we have not made a final decision would be the Coco House. And taking some of that money would be based on the executed contract that they have, they had $200,000 to spend the first year, and it doesn't look like they will be able to do that.
So considering the fact that we have to have all contracts executed by the end of the year, could you tell me how that would work? If we reallocated money, how would we make that happen?
I don't think that that would be too challenging if we reallocated, based on the discussion with finance, if we reallocated to a project that is similar, we will be able to do that internally.
And so, these discussions have already taken place with these entities then?
With BCNI, Coco House, we've been very intentional about getting spending plans and working with the sub-precipients to find creative ways to spend the money based on what they agreed to do with the ARPA funding. So that's Coco House's, like I said, it's still pending.
Okay, so are you saying there would need, there would need, there would be no need for council action to reallocate this?
I am not saying that, but we are working on it internally, and when I meet with finance and the mayor tomorrow, we'll have clear answers on the direction that we're going. But I'm not saying that we will not need council, I can't answer that.
So Mayor, if we need council, we, because we'd have to call a special meeting if there's going to be any council action, so I just ask that the council be made where as soon as possible.
Yes. In fact, if any modifications could be, as soon as next Monday night, something for unanimous consent. But I believe all things to be looked at are conceptually in line with what the original intent was within the organization, how do we just accomplish that goal, whether it's as they initially proposed, or within modification, that might be their ability to do it, or some modification from the city side.
And so, we anticipate that if anything needs to change and come before the council, it would come, but we'd have to do it without unanimous consent. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, you can call a special meeting, there's a couple ways you could do it, the simpler one might be to put it out next Monday night.
As long as everybody agrees.
Why wouldn't everybody agree?
You have to ask people that both know, I don't know.
And I just want to note that, you know, the department has been working with the sub-precipients, we don't want to take the funding back, but, you know, helping them realize what is realistic as far as what they've spent to date, so that we don't lose the money. So the, the goal has been to really work with them to come up with a plan that's realistic and not reallocate the funds. So I just wanted to put that on record.
Yes, and I want to thank you for the, you've worked really, really hard on this, and I know in the past year and a half, maybe by now?
Thank you.
That you've been here, so I really appreciate that. And you did point out two groups, but has, is everyone else doing well with their spend down?
So we got up, we, we worked with every, every project and we've gotten updated accounts on where they are. So the ones that I originally had recommended to city council, which had included Hamilton Hill, they are now actively moving, doing their site approval process. So we've put a little fuel to the fire, so that all of them are actually moving accordingly based on the spending plans that they did, that we did receive and speaking with them. It looks like they're going to be on target.
I know that the YW also hasn't spent a lot.
No, but they are due to spend May of 2025, they will start expending that money down.
Okay. Ms. Carver, could you just would provide the council with a printout, or you can send a stamp where everybody is, so that then everybody can actually see where we are with all of that?
Sure.
Does anyone else have questions regarding the ARPA? Mr. Williams?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have that?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I thought you were writing, go ahead.
So my question, so my question is about BCNI. I remember from that meeting, there were a lot of questions around their ability to spend down, and I remember it differently, that they were strongly saying that they did not anticipate any issues with fully spending down their current ask. So I just, do you have any more specifics?
Do you know which one, BCNI has, they have several ARPA funding, so the one that they said they anticipated not having issues was their owner occupied rehab, that was the $1 million allocation, but the foreclosure prevention is the one that they stated that they have some challenges with finding the demographics to take that funding.
Go ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Patrick, is there a question?
No, I was, I was just calling on Mr. Williams as the stand-in for Mr. Moot Varan here. That's why he was.
Sorry, okay, got it. Anybody else, any questions for ARPA? Oh, sorry, it's you, is that me?
Any other questions? For, for Ms. Carver.
He's a huge twin.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is financial donation to the police department.
Hello, should have a pretty easy one here, so a little background on this, anonymous donors wishing to donate $10,000 to the police department for purchase of a new drone and/or drone related equipment. There's no matching funds required by the city.
Great, any questions or concerns?
Madam Chair, this is going through the foundation, correct? This donation will go through the Public Safety Foundation?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, no action needs to be taken by the council. When you accept the item that the foundation purchases on the city's behalf, you can accept it.
Okay, great, well, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you.
Good holding.
It's anonymous, I guess we can't send it back.
Right.
Thank you. Want to, because what?
The next item, Mr. Trinci could come forward, we have the review of the building code fee schedule, which you all also, we've run another copy of that today, I think.
It was. If you want to bring it to her, if you need all that stuff, I'll bring it to your folks.
It's in the packet also.
So I've been called tonight to be available for some questions revolving around fee increase proposal that has come before you all, and so available for whatever questions you have.
Any questions or concerns about the code?
Can you just do a quick run-through? I don't know that, I know there are, we're not, you highlighted this when you printed it, we didn't get, we didn't have highlighted copies, so if you could just run through the requested changes, of course, please.
So, well, the, the meat and potatoes of the increases revolve around application fees for the building permits. And we proposed a 0.3% increase on applications with construction cost of up to $10,000 and a 0.2% increase of $10,000 to $100,000. And a 0.001% increase of anything over $100,000. So, see, the roofing permits have, we, we want to do away with the flat fee for roofing permits and go with the structure that we use for the building permits. Some various other increases here. So some after-hours inspection requests, propose to charge fees for that. $150 fee with a two-hour minimum, fairly insignificant, we don't get many requests for those, but sidewalk permits to go up to by $25, right now it's at $50, it's going to go to $75. That's for sidewalk repairs. All these fees that are proposed are to cover, cover costs from the department and our staffing. They haven't been increased since, I think there were some minor changes in 2017, but before that, I think it was 2008, we had talked about in the presentation of these increases. Like I said, the meat and potatoes behind all the increases are in the building permit side of the increases, the other ones are very minor overall. We have fence permits, also a small increase from $50 to $75. Let's see, there's other minor changes. Any, any questions involving any specific fees? We should go over the whole presentation again, or?
Ms. DeToro has a question.
Yes.
Thank you. So the asphalt paving permit, so is that like when, who checks on when, like a water main breaks and we have it repaired from the road to our home? Is that there?
So the asphalt paving would be on private property, there's mostly driveways that are being redone. So the contractor work permits would, those would be covering the work in the right-of-way, basically national grid work. So the asphalt paving permits mostly is on private property.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
So has there always been an inspection fee associated just with like curb cut or fence permit? So residential application fee, I see for fence permit, $75, so the $75 inspection fee, so that someone, after the work's done, someone goes back out to inspect, is that?
Yes.
Has that always been a fee associated with?
And we're talking about specifically curb cut?
Curb cut, fence permit, the asphalt paving permit.
So that's new, the inspection fee is proposed, that's a new fee proposed, so alls we had was the $75 application fee with fences specifically and the curb cut, similar same thing, adding an inspection fee. Correct, yes, they do require an extra visit, so we have our administrative processes that are part of the application process, and then field work for the inspections, we felt that a inspection fee is necessary to cover costs.
Done properly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Mr. Trinci, you were just, okay, Ms. Fordville.
Yeah, so in terms of, well, you said like after-hours fee, so at this point in time, are we only, or is the staff only working like eight to four? So there's no schedule where, where like it's staggered, where there are eight to four people and there's four to whatever people? Is, is everybody eight to four, because then that could create a situation for homeowners, contractors, whomever, that you're now charging them to come out after working hours?
So those requests are very rare, and they might be on a commercial project where maybe they're absolutely necessary, requiring a early morning inspection, say for a concrete pour at 5:00 AM. Very rare, but we do have staff on 24/7 in the building department, but it's emergency on-call staffing, so not available for inspections or inspection requests for construction projects.
So, so we don't have, so everybody works eight, eight to four, three to 3:45?
Eight to four.
Okay, so everybody works there, so then, then the answer to the question is like on weekends and no one's, no one's out essentially?
No. Just emergency staff for on-call emergencies.
Okay, and so, how, how many violations, because I know that you issue violations, stop work orders, any number of things. How many do we have outstanding currently? I, I sent you the email to ask that question.
Thank you for preparing me on that.
That's okay, I want you to be prepared, I'm trying to catch you off-guard.
Appreciate it.
So I would like to know about that and what the follow-up looks like, because part of, you know, us increasing fees continually is the enforcement of it, but if you're telling me that staff is only doing eight to four and then they have to do whatever else, their normal thing, then where, where is the time for the enforcement? How much is outstanding right now?
So we have, so I ran a report and I have a summary for you that I'll pass out, so you have it at your disposal after we're, we're through here, but currently we have 2,835 outstanding violations, so that would be pending for possibly...
2,835?
Yes, so that, that would be, that could be pending, that could be in, with tickets issued, with violations needing to go to court. So that's, that's the number of outstanding violations we have currently. That's also the nuisance department's violations. Also, there's some violations that exist with zoning as well, so, so they'll be in there. But in my report summary, you'll see that number of 2,835 outstanding violations currently.
What is the dollar amount?
So the dollar amount would be in a different report, so often those violations aren't, they don't have an administrative fee for every single violation, so they oftentimes are grouped, so for instance, if we issue five violations at a certain parcel, they don't necessarily, they'll, they'll have one administrative fee for all violations, they'll be grouped together. So an administrative fee is $50, and often that, they are grouped together, so we can't assume that it's $50 for each violation.
Could be more, I see.
It could, it wouldn't be more, it would be less.
I see what you're saying. And I, and, so, and is there a charge for, so if somebody is doing work and they get a stop work order, is that charged also $50?
So a stop work order, the fee associated with a stop work order, which is in our, in our presentation, is $550 for a stop work order.
Are there any of those outstanding?
I'm sure there is, I'm sure there's some that haven't, that are waiting to be complied with. I don't have that number available, but I could get you that number and send it in an email to you. So I'm, I'm sure there's some stop work orders that are in process.
Okay. I do another question.
So I see that people get permits for, to do whatever, the permits are pulled, so are they standard, standard color, standard, and then just you write on them whatever they're getting a permit for?
So we have many different permit types, and as far as color goes, electrical would be green, yellow would be our standard permit for most of the fence permits are on white paper. Most, all other building permits would be on our yellow paper.
Sometimes the people are driving, I, I'm just thinking, if people are driving by, they have something specific like on a green paper, we let them know it's for this, because maybe I'm doing a roof when I've only pulled a permit for something much less expensive. So just wondering if there was a color code process that let your, your code people know what they're, if there's, if they're actually, whether it's just seeing a permit to them and say, the permit's there, but let them know that, that what's being done is actually what the permit was pulled for.
It's something to think about improving on, and maybe we can get more color-coded, but right now a building permit is yellow, fence permits are white, electrical permits are green.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Williams?
So I have a question about the 2,800 outstanding violations.
Yes, sir.
Does that reflect outstanding collections or outstanding, like stop address this?
So, as I stated, so a lot of them are in process, so they're being processed, so they're pending, so we're waiting for compliance, many of them will be complied with. So as far as collections go, it doesn't reflect collections. So administrative fees are associated with the violations, many times they're grouped, so there could be, you know, two, three, four, a half a dozen all grouped together with one $50 administrative fee.
And as to follow-on question, just with respect to any changes there's going to be as we just discussed with the speed limit, a timeframe where you have to work through with the population becoming more compliant, do you foresee any shifts in having to be more proactive where this... Do you foresee any shifts in having to be more proactive where this deters people from proactively seeking these permits and thus form requiring your officers to be more present in the community, to Ms. Porterfield's point, adopting a larger number of hours to potentially be more visible in times where if I was a contractor, I would just wait till you're closed?
Yeah, I suppose I could do a deeper study on that and we do not want to deter the public from pulling permits. So that is not our goal. Our goal is to simply keep up with the cost of operations. So, and we really gave this a lot of thought and we did crunch numbers and we are concentrating on keeping up with the cost of operation and we are aware that, I'm aware, every change we make, that we want to encourage pulling of building permits and we don't want to deter that.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
So this is really for Mr. O'Brien, so this, or Ms. Barash, so this is part of the code, so we're going to have to do a public hearing for this, for those changes?
Yeah, I'm, no, we already did the public hearing on this.
We already did the public hearing?
Yes, back in October, so all, it has an effective date on January 1st. So you've had your public hearing, it's now back before the council, they will want to tweak it for next week, change the effective date, whatever you want to do. But the public hearing has been done, so if there's any changes you want to do, this is a good time to do it. And if you don't, then it can go on the agenda next week as is, as a clean copy, ready for a final vote.
Yes, Ms. Porterfield.
So I'm not on this committee, but I do, I would like to see like the amount of those outstanding violations that we have and what the dollar amount is, it equates to. And I have to tell you, I have a concern that even if we increase fees, that the enforcement piece of it seems to be where we're having, we're being challenged in terms of making that happen. So what will the increasing fees really accomplish? Will it just be the people who are already complying paying more and those who aren't? You know, we're covering for that. So that, that's a concern for me because I don't know if anybody else has heard, but certainly I've heard from a few individuals, not a lot, just to be clear, about their, their concerns for the increase in the fee. So I'd like to know where we are with the enforcement. That's, it doesn't, we can pass all the legislation we want, but if we're, if you're not able to have it enforced, then we really haven't really benefited.
Understood. I can get you a more detailed report on those fees and let you know exactly what we're about.
I just want to point out that in the budget for 2025, we had a total, because we already have reviewed this, we were given a total estimated amount of what our revenue would be for 2025. And so we voted that into when we approved the 2025 budget. So we need to be careful because obviously we don't want to undercut our, our previous decision-making on this topic.
But part of that decision is that we're actually collecting, I mean, if we're not collecting it, it's just...
No, we have to collect it.
So one point like there, bringing up is that outstanding fees are currently being re-levitating to the taxes as we speak, so we, we do collect those fees whether, when taxes.
That's a good...
So we do collect the fees, they don't get biased.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
So wanting to be responsive to the budget line, but also want to be considerate of Ms. Porterfield's question that I also agree with, is that an update you can have to us before the end of the week so that we can have that in consideration for Monday?
Absolutely.
That I'm comfortable with.
Okay, then I'll second it. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, this is being, Ms. here's...
Number four, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Number four is being, may I ask, hold up, hold up two weeks?
Being pulled, okay, we're pulling, updating the purchasing policy for two weeks. Thank you. And then the next item is the finance agreement for the rehabilitation of the city of Schenectady's Central Park and Michigan Avenue tennis facilities, Mr. Wong.
I believe you have a draft, it's done, or a draft for an agreement. So we set aside five hundred thousand dollars in ARCA funding over approximately a year ago. In the 2025 capital budget, we approved two million dollars for a total of 2.5 million dollars to properly encumber this month. We're looking for a formal financial agreement of terms with USTA Northeast for the work that we have been talking about. I've been working with Jenny at the USTA and the Law Department on this agreement. The agreement is for the renovations and reconstruction of the Central Park tennis courts and some work at Michigan Avenue to keep those courts in competitive, competitive shape. One of the things to note is that we are going to try to do all eighteen courts. However, at a minimum, we are going to do the upper seven courts and a conversion to eight. Hopefully, we can do the eighteen. We're really trying through our partnership with USTA to have some contractors really competitively bid this next year. We're working on that design as we speak with CHA Sports, who's done some of our work. The courts will be going from an asphalt surface to a post-entioned concrete surface. The life of those courts should be much longer than asphalt. We're hoping for a minimum of thirty years for the courts. And eighteen courts up from the seventeen will allow them to do everything they need there with, using Michigan's really only teaching with the fifteen love group. And then in there is the USTA's contribution of half a million dollars as well as assisting us with some of the operations. We are trying to work with them on that. And if the dollar value was close between being able to do nine or eighteen, the city cannot cover it, they will approach their board for some additional funding.
Great.
To be able to cover that, which we tried to capture in the agreement.
Great. Any questions? Ms. Porterfield?
So there's, there was some conversation, and I don't think it ever made it to this point though, about adding a pickleball court there? Is that something that's being considered?
Not at Central Park, not right now. Not at this complex. I think the idea with this complex was to keep it focused on tennis and not do any kind of a hybrid with the lines because there would be some kind of a hybrid system. But it's not that we can't, we could have that conversation, but I do know that this is their, their primary for, for the entire state is these courts. I don't think that they would want the pickleball striking on these particular courts.
I have to say, the pickleball people want it, just saying. That, yeah, that's my question and I thought that, and I'll have a conversation with you, but I thought there was a conversation about that happening and so this currently seventeen, would hopefully go to eighteen?
So we're calling it base bid and at all, so the base bid is what we're talking about would be to take the upper, seven courts, we're on the upper. If you're looking at the complex from the road on the right, take those seven and make them eight. If you were to, which I know you were familiar with, with the layout, the courts are haphazardly located at different elevations, at different locations, and we would like to consolidate that into a more professional venue similar to what we have on the lower ten. The lower ten courts are two banks of five and five. We're looking to convert the three and four into a four and four, uniform at one elevation. Try to eliminate all of these different levels of courts that we have. So since we're going to this extent with the work, all it takes is a larger machine. We want to get in there and grade this out and really just have possibly two levels only, a bank of eight at a level here and a bank of ten at a level here and try to not have right now, between the seventeen courts, I think they're at six different levels. So there's all these little steps.
At least four, yeah.
That you take, that you go, and so...
That's all the steps.
Yeah. So we're trying to avoid that situation.
Okay, well, this improve my game?
All exponentially. More consistency. We won't be able to blame the court or a crack or anything like that.
Questions?
Yes, I do want to know, I know that the USTA is also contributing to this. Does that give them more time to, or do they have more access to the courts than the public would as a result of their contribution?
As part of this, I haven't seen any additional access. They would want to have, you know, their events on their dates, but they're already doing that now. There hasn't been any conversation of additional events. Really, anything additional usually comes in the form of fifteen love, trying to do some events. And they did say that they would help with trying to schedule because I know that is a difficult thing because the need for the courts, especially once we make this investment, the courts will be sought after probably by more schools and leagues and people like that trying to get on, on them. But USTA hasn't asked for an additional court time slots, only what they've had in the past.
Okay. And so, since we're talking about more courts and other people wanting to come in because they're going to be so professional, something we haven't done but should be doing is how are we talking, since we're talking about fees, how are we talking about, or I know that's probably not even for you, about how we start charging so that this is, we're spending money, so how are we creating revenue around what's going to be according to what you're telling us is very state-of-the-art and really sought after?
Yeah. Not a hundred percent. I know the conversations I've been involved in revolve around that. However, it always comes down to a balance of fee generation compared to cost for the city. So, you know, if someone is collecting a ten-dollar fee, but you're paying that person fifteen dollars an hour, what the balancing point of that is. So that's one of the things we're working with fifteen eleven USTA about, about other systems for reservations and things like that, things that are happening. We've talked if we could get sponsorships for that to do some kind of income generation. But it is difficult because you would be putting someone there that is essentially a seasonal worker and you would be putting them in almost an enforcement position and it would be difficult. It would be a difficult thing because you'd be telling someone, no, you can't come here and you have to really provide them, how do they do it? And unless we're giving them the ability to be able to sign up and book and do things right there on site and then it's, you know, go home or go to a park's office. So there's a lot, and I know that we've been talking about it, Paul's extremely familiar with it and he's, you know, he's pointed out a lot of the things that's gone into it, you know, the complications of it. But, I mean, also, you know, we now have Mr. Mosaic, he's in place, he wasn't here really a year ago, he's aware of it. So I think these are all good problems to have, much like with the pool, you know, how to have, but, but we really should get ahead of it too.
Right. So, so the leagues and all the other things coming in, they will be paying to use the courts?
I would think that you would want everyone, I mean, we have, you know, Mr. Daley sitting right here, right, and you know, we're all involved in the golf course and that we, there is no, you know, you pay. Miss Kuna High School comes to play there, they pay. Schenectady High School comes, you pay. A league comes, they pay. It's just like a parks amenity, we put just as much money in, we're putting a lot of public money into this facility. So if the city was to use it as a resource to generate revenue, I wouldn't hold that against us. But if you were to say, we're public and this is a public park and this is what you want, I can see it that way. It depends on how you really want to view the facility and its use. You know, I don't think other entities should be using this to save them or make themselves money.
Right, that's right. Like an instructor, we've had this conversation, I mean, like someone doing private lessons or something.
Correct. And school districts have budgets as large as the city of Schenectady. So if they're looking at this as some way to save a line item on a budget, is that really as appropriate? It should be, probably not. But if a community member and a city taxpayer who lives by Central Park or not wants to go play tennis, go play tennis. Or we determine that that's not the seven, you know, there's also the conversation, those aren't the eighteen courts to play this kind of tennis. We just made the investment in the, you know, fairview, that's tennis, we can look at doing it in Steinman's and we're trying to do that there. So you could, you know, make some kind of thing up that says that this eighteen, just like the golf course, this is our professional courts. You want to play on these courts, you gotta, you know, do a little more. So that's up to, I would think, David.
Mr. Williams?
I have two comments, the first of which is I appreciate Mr. Daley being here and all the, all that he does with the golf course. From your perspective, is there any infrastructure that's currently in place for us to leverage to trial something like this with associating fees with the uses of these types of reinvestments and specifically the tennis courts? Because you do it very well and I imagine it didn't happen by chance and it's required a lot of years of understanding and then adjusting.
Are you talking about with the golf course?
Correct. Not to the same extent, but could we...
No, I guess what the issue is, is that you have to remember, this is why, you know, I don't know how to say it, you know, in a certain way, this is why there aren't as many tennis clubs in existence anymore, right? Is because the business model doesn't work for everything. We're fortunate here at the city to have a golf course and facility that we can use to actually make money, pay for employees and generate that kind of a revenue. To put that kind of a revenue structure in place at the tennis court may be possible, but you're talking about fees to pay that may not be as feasible and you might not see the, the utilization go to where you want, you know, because you're talking about, okay, to have someone there, we're going to need a Central Park tennis manager and that Central Park tennis manager is going to need some kind of a part-time assistant for when he's not there. And then that's going to need a little area to collect fee, you know, and then you go down that, that road a bit. I think that we've talked about this before, the fees, the fees add up and now all of a sudden, if you're trying to recoup that...
There's already a fee scheduled for Central Park, the council passed it a few years ago.
For the tennis?
Yes.
So who's collecting the revenue?
Collecting revenue because to put a person out there like Chris mentioned, we're paying fifteen, fifteen hours for the person standing there to collect, twelve hours. Unless you want to raise the fees, it covers the cost of the person standing there and then it comes, Chris said...
Do you want to come up here? Thanks.
Want me to answer the question? Come on.
Come on.
They'll be introducing for some reason. Follow up.
We do have a fee scheduled for tennis at Central Park and Central Park. Jerry Rural Park, Michigan Avenue, there are no fees for any other park for tennis other than Central Park. We did try to implement it, we did put seasonals out there when we first implemented the fees. The problem is paying cash to seasonal employees is not a good thing in the park, okay? The other is it becomes an enforcement. When somebody's out there, they play their hour, you gotta collect another fifteen dollars and they say, no, we're playing another hour, nobody's repaying, who are we earning? So it's very difficult, difficult for a, you know, a youth to be out there at sixteen, seventeen years old trying to collect the fee from somebody who, you know, they're not going to get in an argument and we're collecting a fee less than we're paying the person who's trying to collect the fee. So it's not a big business model.
So when, so, but, so can we, we should start focusing then on the groups that are using the USTA and all the other groups because then they have to schedule it in order to use it. So there's a place that we could definitely be, put a model in place where they have to pay us at a time to use it and their time is blocked out, et cetera.
And that, that could be something that could be put forth to the council to approve. If you want to set a fee schedule for tournaments or different things, yes.
Absolutely. I, I, we have to collect some funds.
Yeah, I thought we already had that fee schedule.
Yeah, I think it was, I want to say twenty-two or somewhere, twenty-one, I don't know.
But the enforcement pieces, yeah.
And, yes, and we're paying more to collect less, so it doesn't make sense.
It is, it is a conundrum because even thinking about, we had Health and Recreation had a meeting and talked about pool fees and similar issues arose in terms of, you know, who's collecting the fees? Do we really want to put a young person, which is basically what we hire for our seasonal employees, in the position of, you know, are they going to get into an argument with someone? I mean, so it is, it is sort of a complex, it's not just a simple black and white issue. But I think that we probably would have to, you know, look again.
Not everybody comes with cash in their pocket to play tennis.
Right.
And you have to do it on a card, have somebody with a phone that can do a card, so it's...
Let's read, some sort of technology here at City, at City Hall where they come here and they get some sort of pass or something. It's the same with the, you know, talk, we talked a little bit about those kinds of things around the pool as well. So it looks like we might have to invite you guys and reconvene Health and Recreation to kind of look at some of these as well, to make some recommendations.
I would agree with that.
I would agree with that.
But again, I think that we should definitely put something in place and if, that, you said we already have something, but now we're talking about investing quite a bit of money into the tennis courts. And listen, I play tennis, so it's not like I'm not, you know, it's not going to impact me. It's okay because it's something that, you know, people want to do. But if we're people coming from all over and this is like a state-of-the-art place, then we should have something in place for tournaments and groups that are coming in to, you know, bring a lot of people in to play, to, 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 then some of the tournaments right now with the courts being as they are, we still get quite a bit of people, so I can imagine that will get even more when this happens. So that is something I think that we definitely need to focus on. happens. So, that is something I think that we definitely need to focus on. And the Recreation Advising Committee, I think, is something that really needs to be convened, reconvened, so that we could get some input and some assistance with that as well.
We do need to do that. I was actually talking about City Council's Health and Recreation Committee, but I agree with you that we also still need the Recreation Advisory Committee as well, from the public.
Cut next again.
Mr. Williams?
I have a second follow-up question. One thing I've always appreciated about Schenectady was its openness to different or emerging sports, like talking about disc golf, which I'm not good at, and I accept that. But with respect to tennis, I think, again, to Ms. Porterfield's point about being responsive to just our emerging pickleball community, do you think that that would be a non-starter of a question going back to the USTA and asking if they're considerate to that? But I wouldn't want you to do it at the expense of the project moving forward, because I understand in making that investment, it would be to prioritize tennis. But I would hate for us to do this entire revamp absent any considerations for other destinations within the city for us to make other investments.
Ms. Ren.
Again, the US Tennis Association wants those courts striped to a professional standard for tennis. We've made major investments in Hillhurst Park, where we put pickleball courts in. So, again, we are trying to support that, to look at the demand, are there other options, you know, at Steyman's Park, at, I don't know about Michigan Avenue, and I don't know about Jerry Burrell.
Jerry Burrell is, like, four courts. Like, it's, it's very small.
Right. Some of these, I don't think you get 500 people to show up. In fact, you want, you know, the availability of courts that are convenient and are in the different neighborhoods so that, again, they can be utilized. The ones in the neighborhood like that, you can dual stripe it, so you could play tennis on it and play pickleball on it. The real tennis pros, and they don't want the secondary striping for pickleball.
In our state, is there any ability to put, like, better than makeshift signings so that it shows the pickleball community that we are considerate, and that there are other locations throughout the community at those locations where they could still come and be at?
Possibly. I, I think the big thing would be something like along the lines of Steyman's Park, which the mayor spoke about. We are trying to allocate some of the funding that we have left over with the ARPA under a paving contract to revamp that. And one of the things with pickleball, with tennis, that's kind of unique, is that you can fit multiple pickleball courts onto a tennis. So, from a utilization standpoint, it would be better for the city to put four pickleball courts in the footprint of one tennis court than to take up a tennis court with one pickleball court, because usually you're just kind of fitting it in, you know, with the, with the kitchen and everything, it's just much smaller. So, the net is overly sized, whereas I've seen the layouts of how you can really do it and how the footwear works. So, you know, I would think that Steyman's is our next example, where we could try to put four pickleball courts there. And we always try to put a basketball court, something like that there. So, I think that's the idea we have there. And then, you know, there was the conversation of, you know, one of these times when we get the Parks Advisory Committee together, we really need to talk of Riverside Park and what ended up happening there, because we've lost those facilities. So, I, I think really, we just have to look, and this is something that Paul and I have talked about with, with Bill Mazaika, is just about taking back some of our facilities that we had and reimagining some of it. Because if we did have Steyman's Park back to what it was, and we did have Riverside Park back to what it was, and some, you know, Jerry Burrell, we just redid, but we did not put the pickleball there, even our facilities would, you know, increase. And we would have, be able to spread that out. And I think the mayor's point is a valid one, that we have one pickleball complex that we spent quite a bit on that came out fantastic, but it would be just nice to have that courts around the area for people who just want to play. Not everything needs to be tournament ready. I think there is some value in just having a neighborhood be able to come out and play pickleball.
Yeah. Mr. Williams?
And just to clarify, Colin, is just making sure we have appropriate considerations to, as in our intent, but also implementation, because what I'd hate to see is tennis players kicking pickleball players off the courts. So, I just wanted to be communicated appropriately that we're saying there are better areas in this, in the city suited for this activity, not that we don't want to use Schenectady.
Anything, Ms. Porterfield? Thanks. And just for the record, I'm still advocating for at least one dedicated pickleball court, and, and I, I don't probably, I'm asking for that because there's, pickleballs are going to score. People play a lot, and a lot of people who live in the city play the court.
At Central Park?
Mm-hmm.
At this complex?
Yes, I'm pushing, I, for one dedicated one. That would be my ask. I've heard from people, we actually had a tournament up there where they had to fix it, and, you know, like I said.
I'll talk with Jenny about that.
And to fit four into one. So, I just wanted to, you know, it's been, people have mentioned it to me, so I'm going to bring it forward, that if we could, and hopefully USTA would understand. But one dedicated court, that's my ask.
And I will just close the conversation by saying that pickleball courts at Hillside are, are great. I mean, so, I mean, I don't play, but I've been up to see them. They really came out nice, so I appreciate the work on that, too. And I think that the core, you know, sort of pickleball players are really excited about it and enjoy using that facility as well. So, I just want to make sure the public hears that there are, that there are those courts in place.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wong. The next item is also from Mr. Wong.
Madam Chair, I think you need me to vote this out at a committee for the full council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. So, may I get a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with USTA Eastern for the rehabilitation of the City of Schenectady's Central Park and Michigan Avenue, Michigan Avenue tennis facilities?
Given that was the caveat, the ask or consideration for additional court, not that I'd be holding up, just to see if there was an opportunity to...
For the one court?
Yes.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Thank you for your reminder. Okay, the next item is the AVAC for the Grouse Park improvements to Carver Construction Incorporated in the amount of $643,145. Mr. Wong?
$500,000 was allocated for improvements to Grouse Park last year. The park improvements centered around the ability to play pickle, cricket, I'm sorry, I'm talking pickleball, play cricket at the field, which is the city's primary cricket field location. We worked with the cricket community, a couple groups that run it, with Mr. Mazaika, who is also very involved with the cricket community, put together a bid package to mostly clear, grade, and make the facility just larger and more open. There also is some synthetic wickets in there so that the turf doesn't get degraded, as you'll see on a lot of the areas where we play, as the pitch and all that gets really worn down. We bid this project, got seven bids, I believe. The bids ranged from the Carver Ho that you have to almost $1.2 million. The bid did exceed the original ARPA allocation. However, what I'm proposing is moving some remaining balance from the Hillhurst Pool project that was granted $250,000, I believe, in ARPA funding to cover that so that we can move forward with the project in Grouse Park.
Questions? Ms. Porterfield? So, I know that you want to, so the proposal is to move the money, because you just talked about why you're really comfortable being able to move that money from the pool.
Sure. So, the council set aside money, as we all know, the Hillhurst Park Pool has been having issues for quite some time, primarily around water, just leaving the pool. We lose water, a lot of water in that pool. We hired a consultant to evaluate the pool. The evaluation of the pool proved that the repairs to, to fix the leak were well in excess of $500,000, if not a million dollars, due to the structural. And also, we have some other issues with that pool, just given the data, but electronically, things like that with some of our services. So, we did not have the appropriate funding where we think at the time was the best investment to put that into that pool. And the money kind of sat. We had a lot of ARPA projects going on. We were working on Central Park Pool, we were working on Steyman's, you know, there was numerous projects the city's worked on. So, that 200, essentially $20,000 balance for the Hillhurst Pool sat, and it was not reallocated. Now that we're coming up on the 31st, we have that, and we had a need here with Grouse Park, so we thought that it was the simplest thing to move the one to the other, so that we can do one park project and get it done, and then spend the money that was allocated. It is from a park to a park, which is nice. We are not investing into something else other than a park, so it is a public amenity. But that is, that's where we, we were with that.
So, looking at this spreadsheet that we were given for Hillhurst Park, we did make still significant improvement at Hillhurst.
I don't have that spreadsheet, I'm sorry.
It's right here.
She has a different spreadsheet.
Oh, that one. Oh, okay, we have that one, good.
Doesn't outline for us what each of these projects were, but...
Yeah. So, I mean, these were, this is the Hillhurst and Fairview Park project that we're showing here. That is a different project. So, Hillhurst and Fairview Park, I'm sorry, just took me a minute, was the pickleball tennis improvements with the basketball. So, this money was spent and allocated, and then the Hillhurst Pool money was not.
Okay, so that was the, the ARPA fund was just for the Hillhurst Pool?
They're just, I'm just checking.
They're both ARPA. But you, you have this one as well, you have another color coded one.
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Sorry. That's okay. So, this is, she's, so, you're talking about the Hillhurst Pool money?
Right here, Hillhurst Pool, that was the 250,000 original allocation.
Right, yes.
The other, Hillhurst Fairview was a larger allocation.
$500,000.
I understand now.
Yes.
So, you said there was 220,000 left, and, but you're only needing, are you needing all of it? Let me just ask it like that.
Most of it. Yeah, it's most of the balance, about 210.
Okay. And not to put you on the spot, there's a plan that we would be able to spend the rest. We don't want to, for, you said we didn't spend 210?
I don't want to, it's more of a Derek or finance thing. All of these codes, there's most likely there's going to be some remainders in some of them. And I, I think that's what we're trying to develop, is where some of that goes. Because, you know, this is, I can't, I can't make every number work to a penny. So, this is the best route to take $220,000 and take approximately 210 to put it towards this project. There will be some sort of a remainder. That may happen on a couple of these projects that we have. But that's, that's something I think that we're working on, is where the remainder goes.
Okay.
But I don't have, I don't have all the remainders added up, what that would be.
All right. Okay. Ms. Tor?
Thank you. The structure there, is any, anything being done with the structure that's in place?
Yes, structure, the power lines, many of the trees, the existing fences. The idea with this is that cricket really just needs a very large area. And so, we're trying to give them the appropriate large areas that are flat and playable so that they can have their leagues there. So, that, that's most of, most of this work is actually demolition, grading, seeding. That's most of the work, which is why we got so many interested bidders, because essentially the barriers to entry were low. A lot of people can do work like this. And Carver's done work like this in the past. So, we don't have any, any reservations about working with them.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, entertain a motion to award this contract to Carver?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Thank you, Mr. Wong. Thanks. Okay, so the next, that was it? So, call for, come out of finance?
I think motion to return.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Take the call to order Public Services and Utilities. We have four items on the agenda tonight, all dealing with requests to purchase chemicals for our water and waste water treatment. Who would call, Mr. Park, for them?
Hello again.
Hi.
The, the first item, as the legislative request was, was the replenishment every year. As you know, we buy chemicals for either wastewater treatment for the water wells. And the first chemical on is the chlorine gas for the water wells for disinfection. Although bid was JCI Jones. That increased $50 from last year per cylinder. So, that's about $18.25, $18,000 more for chlorine gas than last year. They were the little bid. And we do assume 150 pound cylinder per day, 365 days, so hence how we price it. Last year, because of lack of rain, more water was used. We, we spent all of that. It's really weather dependent. A lot of rain, a lot of cold weather, people aren't using as much water. But typically, we budget for one cylinder per day.
Any questions? Have a motion, Ms. Park?
Second.
The second...
All in favor?
Did you call for a...
All in favor? All in favor.
Ask for the vote.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
The second legislative request is for the purchase for hydrochloric acid, which is 4i. It was also bid. That price did come down by two cents per pound over last year. And, you know, yes, so, we're going to save about $3,000 there.
A savings is a savings.
But it did come down two cents per pound. And that again is for the water treatment.
Any questions? Got the motion?
All in favor?
All in favor, aye.
These are legislative requests, it's actually for the wastewater treatment, and that is for liquid sodium bisulfate, and that is to remove chlorine from the waste stream prior to going into the river. That bid came in exactly the same as last year. There's no change at 1.86 per gallon.
That's great.
Any questions? Any motion, any other confirmation?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The final legislative request is also for the wastewater treatment plant. It's for sodium hypochlorite, which is chlorine, but we use liquid at the wastewater treatment plant. That did come in at $1.88 last year. And it's 10 cents cheaper this year per gallon. So, there's a savings there from last year of about $15,500 based on the same gallons we use it, so.
Yeah, very nice. Any, any recent margins are coming down? I mean, chlorine and...
Yeah, there's only a couple producers of sodium hypochlorite, JCI Jones and Surpass Chemicals. Surpass used to produce early on, now they buy out of Canada. So, a lot of these chemicals are just not, they're brought in. Chlorine gas, Jones Chemicals, pretty much, that makes the market on chlorine gas. Years ago, we bid one ton cylinders at the wastewater treatment plant, but converted to sodium hypochlorite. So...
Thank you. Any other questions?
Motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make the motion to the panel.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, thank you.
entertain a motion to lead Public Services and Utilities?
Motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to call out order of Public Safety Committee. We have one item on the agenda tonight. We're going to add a second, which is going to be the reduction of city speed limit. The first is going to be a discussion to amend City Code Chapter 183, which is nuisance. So, if you can remember, the last time we had a discussion around noise, it was to address, we just have an initial conversation on Chapter 182, which is noise. And I think a discussion meeting that we had, where members of the Corporation Council, Police Department, to include the Commissioner, was present. And it was his recommendation that we addressed the nuisance aspect of it, outside of continuing conversations to initially address, like, time and also what of noise would that encompass, as the conversation kind of morphed into addressing vehicles and then pets. So, I wanted to take a first step, and wait till after a bite of conversations to bring this item back. This is just looking at discussion item. In Chapter 183, there's a smaller chapter where it talks about the control system that he was recommending. And I went to the extreme, which was changing it from the three point to six points before it becomes a misdemeanor, I guess, at an offense level for the Corporation Council to enforce. 12 points is that key metric. So, from three to four, the number of instances will be cut in half. So, kind of going to have a conversation around where councilmembers felt with that type of action. It is what would be the very... It is what would be a very strong response to addressing noise throughout the city, biting to a lot of the concerns we continue to hear. There are a lot of offenders throughout the city. So just looking for any feedback or comments around the table.
I just want to be clear, though, so we're really looking at 182, is what, Mr.?
Is it 182 or 183?
183.
It says 18...
Yeah, but the noise ordinance is section, Chapter 182. The penalties for the, is Chapter 183, where you assess the points for a nuisance. So that's what the chairman's talking about, is amending 183-1B1, adding a whole nother R. And then what you're going to do is add that over noise violations from Chapter 183 into that as the six-point violation. And then you've got B2, where currently, I believe, three points. So you would delete that and just read letter that section. So it's really shifting it from one column to another column. So it goes through a whole list of various points and offenses, and it's just moving the noise violations out of the three-point into the six-point column. So that would need an amendment to the code in the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Patrick.
I think we had, so what we have in front of us is 183, and I think we've seen and talked about 182 at a previous meeting, correct?
Correct.
And that's where we saw the point value, I think. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just for the committee's reference, there was reference in 182, noise ordinance regarding mufflers and loud music.
Yeah, right.
There's cross-references with state vehicle and traffic law. So I'll provide copies of those references dealing with loud mufflers and mufflers and exhaust systems, and loud, loud sound systems. Any other questions or comments? I highlighted those in the stack, the section, the general section of vehicle and traffic laws, 375, mufflers and exhaust systems is sub 31, and then I...
Do we have...
47. So that's just for your review and reference, but our code currently makes reference to the vehicle and traffic code, so the individuals can be cited under our code or under the vehicle and traffic law.
Gotcha.
Unless there are any other questions or comments, I don't like stealing credit, it's not one of the recommendations from Commissioner Devine to make this adjustment. I think it takes into consideration the ongoing comments we hear from the committee. And then to Mr. O'Brien's point, it still allows us opportunities to make further adjustments in Chapter 182, but that seemed to be the more discussion. So this allows us to be responsive as a council. I know in the warmer or the colder months, we don't deal with noise to the same degree as in our warmer. So this allows us to kind of get ahead of those complaints that we know continually exist year in, year out. So I know it's just a discussion item, unless there is a overwhelming support towards moving anything, but I know one of our members in the committee is out, and I don't want to be forceful. And again, we still have time to address it. Just wanted to bring the discussion back to the council.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions or comments, I would just ask that you look at this further detail, and then we come back in two weeks looking to make a vote.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. The second item, which was being responsive to the call for public hearing presentation regarding the reduction of city's speed limit to 25 miles per hour. I really appreciated that detailed presentation. And I don't know if there's any further questions or comments, and just, there's a motion to call for public hearing.
So moved.
I will second. All in favor? Aye. If there are no other items, I'll call Public Safety Committee, ask for a motion for adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to call to order Study City Development and Planning. We have 10 items on the agenda. The first item to accept, acceptance of grants from Metroplex Development Authority for the Broadway Quarter Improvement. Mr. Wall?
Earlier this year, Metroplex reached out to myself about our paving contractor, Louisey, doing some work for Metroplex, essentially on Broadway. They wanted to expedite the work, so the work was performed as a change order on the city's contract. Metroplex agreed to reimburse the city for the costs associated with that change order, and the costs are in your agreement. Passing this, Metroplex would then issue a check to the City of Schenectady to reimburse them for the costs associated with the removal of the island on Broadway.
Any questions are there in this? I'll move it. I will second. All those in favor? Aye. Item number two, to authorize the mayor's designation to enter an agreement with New York State Department of Transportation for the Brandywine-McClullin pedestrian improvement project. Mr. Wall?
This is a federally project on the current tip. The project was applied for and modeled by myself after the PSAP project that was done around City Hall, where we did signals. So essentially, we improved, as you know, the signals all around City Hall, up and down for pedestrian accommodations. We have a similar cluster of signals located at Brandywine-McClullin Union Eastern, essentially the, where the drugstore locations are. It's a good location for these type of improvements because it is along the main corridor for pedestrians leaving the high school. And it also is just a very dense vehicle corridor. Most of this project would be fairly straightforward and simple, where it would be focused on replacement of traffic signals. If you know the corridors, which I'm sure you all do, there isn't a ton that we can do there from a geometry standpoint, because they are narrow. The area that I am going to be looking into, and I have had discussions with Metroplex, is in particular, Eastern Avenue and McClullin, right where the pharmacy gas station parking lot is. The intersection has a lot of lanes. If you're coming from the Price Chopper area, it might be a little bit overdesigned, crosswalks a little wider than they need to be. So that intersection will be focused. And the other intersection that we're going to be focusing on more from assignment is that a lot of complaints, we're really going to look hard at the Rugby Road-McClullin light. Residents know that if you were coming from Rugby Road, either side, and you hit that light, there is no detection. It is essentially a time signal, and you would just sit there. And it does get on a lot of people's nerves with that. So we want to really look at that and make sure that the signal is the most warranted thing. And then if it does go back, which we're predicting that, we do have some form of detection there, and that the signals are all coordinated to try to make sure that the traffic moves better. All of these systems, we're hoping to have the Myo Vision system, which is a camera system, and, you know, run it with the city's fiber so that we can try to get some economy to scale to really move traffic through the area. So this is the master agreement for bringing on the design consultant. Next agreement that you should see would be when we come for construction, which would hopefully be in a year.
Any questions or comments? I'll move it. I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Wall. Next item on the agenda is to authorize a lease agreement with Metroplex. Ms. Barak?
This is a follow-on from the license agreement that the council authorized last cycle, the Alco Trail and Tunnel Project. The trail that is already there, that the city council authorized license agreement for to the city, this is the next part of it where the city would license access to Metroplex so that they can extend the trail and change the direction of the trail. So this would give them and their, them the ability to do the construction.
So when we, what we agreed on at the last cycle was to, first of all, to execute 2017...
Yep.
...with national grid, and also to give them easement. That was our last cycle?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Right. And so this time, so now we're asked, we're saying to Metroplex, go ahead and extend this site.
Yeah, so they're going to extend the trail.
Okay. It's being paid by Metroplex, no cost to the city. Should send that first.
Okay.
Okay.
It's required of ERI.
Yes, but I was looking for the cost, but there is none, so it's always good to know. All right. Any questions or comments?
I'll move it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is to amend Resolution Number 2024-246 for the sale of property located at 461 Hewlett. It's not a contract negotiation, it's just to amend our resolution? Okay, Mr. Brown? You all right? That's okay.
You don't have to apologize.
That's not even funny. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
So Resolution 2024-246 authorized the city to sell 461 Hewlett Street in the amount of $85,000. There's a spelling error on the buyer's name and the information that was sent for the resolution. So we're just looking to update that and add that extra letter to the buyer's name.
Okay. We just need to correct the spelling on the buyer's name. Okay. Any questions or comments?
So moved.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is selection of restaurant concession operator at the Schenectady Municipal Golf Course. Mayor McCarthy?
Madam Chair, there are some components that will be subject to negotiations under contract, and so I ask that be moved into executive session.
Okay, thank you. So either five through 10 are all going to be addressed in executive session. So at this time, I ask for motion to recess. City Development and Planning?
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
We are recessed.
So I'd like to call to order Claims Committee. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Just confirm Federation Council, both of them, we discuss them executive session.
Yes, because it's dealing with settlement possible, you know, two cases currently in litigation, so it would be terms of the proposed settlement, and so it's still active litigation.
With that knowledge in mind, may I ask for motion to enter executive session?
Can I make a motion?
Yes, I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Members of the public will have to exit.
Is that the key that was here? Is that the restroom key that we had sitting?